Got to do my job. We can talk afterward. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. And we are going to call the meeting to order. We're going to have our stand for our invocation and then immediately after the invocation, we'll have our pledge. Father, we are grateful to you for loving us and we come to you humbly. We admit ourselves to you for your sovereign will and may we, may we hand ourselves over to your will and accept it and, and do everything that you would have us do and glorify you in the midst of that. We thank you for, for the way that you have blessed us and blessed our, our employees and blessed our citizens in this town. And we, we just ask that as we, we come to make decisions on behalf of the people of this town, we'll do so in a responsible way, in a thoughtful way. And just every decision we make will be glorifying to you. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first public comment period is for matters that do not appear on the agenda. If you have a public comment about a matter that does not appear on the agenda, we invite you to come forward. You have three minutes to do so. If you have not already filled out a form, we ask you to fill out a form. And when you come forward, state your name and address. I have Eric Keller first.
My time here.
I'll let you know.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Keller, for those I haven't not met yet. My intention here is to speak on a potential disc golf course, which I have reached out to many of y'all already. Here, I've got a presentation I will run through real quick. This is going to hit on some of the basic topics and some of the benefits of having a disc golf course in a town. The proposed location is at Handley Park. A lot more detail can be seen in my initial email to everybody. About the sport, disc golf is played just like golf. Lowest score wins and it's played, instead it was played with a disc and a basket or target. People of all ages and skill levels can play. Disc golf is a year-round sport, especially in Georgia. And so this can ensure its continuous play throughout the year. Currently, there are only four eighteen-hole courses within a twenty-five mile radius. Those include McCurry Park in Fayetteville, Hunter Recreation in Sharpsburg, which is brand new, Dog River in Douglasville, and Boundary Waters, also in Douglasville. My area map here shows proximity of those. The next slide I have is about some of the key points on disc golf in general. As of 2022, this comes from a UDisc report, which is the, basically the nation's leading app for disc golf. As of 2022, there are fourteen thousand courses worldwide. Over nine thousand of those are in US, the United States. So as you can see, the vast majority of disc golf is played here in the United States. They report that four point three courses were installed per day. That quite shocked me myself. That would, that's equals to about fifteen hundred courses put in twenty twenty-two alone. We'll move on to some of the key benefits of having a course. Disc golf courses are relatively inexpensive to install and the game is very affordable to play. Courses attract new people and parks, to the park systems and support local businesses. Disc golf offers one of the highest returns on investment to a park and recreation facility. Health benefits include exercise, lower stress, weight loss, and increased energy. It's a great way to meet new friends. Case in point, to my left, I, I met this gentleman playing disc golf here in the town, obviously just in a field. But he is a Tyrone resident, a business owner, Chris Marosi. Twelve, twelve seconds left, folks. It's going to be difficult to put this together. Yeah, I've been playing disc golf all my life. It's, it's a healthy sport, it's a clean sport for, for folks of all ages. Okay. The location that you see right there, it's fairly convenient. Disc golf, for to have a decent course, we need to have a little bit of water. We need to have, you know, some obstacles. No fertilizers, like a golf course over Peachtree City. Anybody eat the fish over Peachtree City Lake? I didn't think so. Okay. So this is going to help preserve the watershed that's taking place over that pond back there. In addition to that, provides an efficient means for enforcement of law, sanitation, as well as landscape.
You continue. You can have three minutes too.
Thank you very much. Beyond that, you know, in terms of efficiency of scale and the fact that the parks are presently already being managed, baseball and soccer, et cetera. According to Philip Troquet, there is a plan to have a walkway back there so that folks can navigate a path and get a breath of fresh air and such. Well, actually, we have a number of disc golf courses, Fayetteville being, Fayetteville being one of them, where they have integrated such a situation where we have hiking paths, walking paths, what have you, with disc golf. No one has reported being hit in the head with a disc. Okay, so it can be done. We have one of our designers right here that, that can help us with that. But more importantly, when we look at the plan, according to Philip, you know, we want it to be a nature-type thing. We want people to be able to walk, live, et cetera. We, we did reach out to Ms. Owens and she did not have any dismay over the idea. Furthermore, Mr. Perkins has been reached out and nobody's going like this. Okay, so we're asking ourselves, hey, here we have this little bit of water back here, some land that right now is not being used. That is to be potentially used for a walk path. Why not integrate both? Means of efficiency here. Okay. Now, with that, we're creating more of a destination. What is that going to do to businesses on Handley Road? What is that going to do for our own legacy park who is tucked back there, but just a short walk to that disc golf course? What about the parents that take their kids to the baseball practice or hockey practice, don't want to sit in a car? Maybe they could go take a walk. Maybe they can go throw a little bit of frisbee, what have you. Not to mention, mention the dentist that's further up there on Handley Road. Now, we haven't spoke with these folks and of course, they would be probably all for it. Okay. But the point is, is that there's opportunity there. I already mentioned about the water runoff and there's no negative externalities with regards to fertilizers or, you know, threatening the waterway or anything like that. But we do have a concern out there and that is that of deciduous trees. That would be oaks, elms, et cetera, the trees that drop their leaves during the fall. Guys, when we built Handley Park out there, there's a whole bunch of pines out there that the builders put up there just to kind of put up for temporary soil erosion. The problem is, is that is going to, in the future, be a liability for everybody. Okay. Anybody like pines? Pine beetles, pine cones, pine pollen, pine sap? Everybody? Okay, nobody. Okay. The concept behind a, a good course design is to allow these huge oats, allow these nice elms, these, these nice maples, et cetera, to blossom. Okay, right now, they're sort of being shrunk up. Okay. And that's basically what I have to say. Obviously, I would like, right now, to compel this council to activate this space. But of course, we need discovery. We need more time and therefore, we would like to be on the agenda moving forward so that we can further look into this.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And I, but I do need you to fill out a form for our clerk if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
All right. And Steve Castlin?
Good evening. First thing I want to say is thank you all for those pickleball courts. My wife is a big pickleball player. She plays over here all the time with a large group of ladies. I want to give you just a quick update on Castle Lake and our progress. We've completed all the plans. We've submitted all of our plans to, probably cost us a hundred and fifty thousand for engineering studies. We sent those in, they sent them back. We did it again. We now think they're approved. That's a rumor we have. It's a confirmed rumor, but we haven't officially been told that. The big thing that Dennis is probably asking is, do you have any money in the bank? And we do, we've got two hundred and sixty thousand right now. We think we have about thirty thousand outstanding for the dues coming up. And so everything's on track. It's my belief or my hope, it's, it's more of a belief that by the end of, of this year, I think it's going to be done. We, we're, we're feeling pretty confident. Now, the big question is, what about that grant? Which, to say we are thankful to you all for that partnering with us would be an understatement. It's a beautiful, wonderful thing and God bless all of y'all for, for working with us on that. We don't know the status. We know the status, which is, well, we know one exciting thing, that, that the Environmental Protection Division's Safe Dams Program has recommended that we get approved for that. So that's a big deal. We got you all on board. We got them on board. So who knows? This, this could be wonderful. And that's it. If y'all have any questions, let me know. But I haven't been up here for a while because I really didn't have anything to report. But I just wanted to let you all know that we're still out there and we're still humbly thankful to this group for everything you all have done so far.
Thank you, Stephen. Well, I can, I can say you, you all handled that process very well, beautifully. You made it possible for us to partner with you. So you need to write a book on, on how to get government to say yes. Because we want to say yes, but we can't always say yes. So what you did and what you continue to do is exemplary. All right. Does anyone else have any comments? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, moved.
Motion is second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Is there a motion to approve a consent agenda?
No, moved.
Second.
Motion is second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Our first item is, who is presenting? You presenting this?
So you have before you, ladies and gentlemen, consideration to award project number PW dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one, Pendleton Trail Culvert Replacements to SH Creel Contracting. This is a 2017 SPOST project and involves replacing three corrugated metal pipes near 475 Pendleton Trail. So if you're coming from here, going into Pendleton, it's the first entrance. There are, you know, not, probably, I don't know, a hundred yards in, there are three corrugated pipes going under. They've been there since the neighborhood was built. They have certainly reached the end of their, their lives. So that was a project that we put into the 2017 SPOST to get those replaced. It was bid, the bid process closed on the sixteenth of February. The low bidder was SH Creel at three hundred and ten thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. If I'm not mistaken, this was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, so they came in under. Estimated completion would be summer of 2023. And the, the goal here is to, of course, speaking of dams, get this project completed before we start work on the, on the dam side. That way, they, they can, you don't have to worry about entrances being blocked or anything like that. They'll, they'll have their, their, their entrance. Again, funding is from SPOST and staff recommends awarding this project to SH Creel for the price of three hundred and ten thousand seventy-four fifty-three. I will mention that because of the cost, the, the, the bid differences and the type of, you know, bids we got, we did have our engineering firm do some due diligence and he did recommend SH Creel to do the work. He feels confident that they're, they're capable and have the experience necessary to make it work.
Where are they from, Brandon?
That's a great question. I believe, I don't remember. They're, they're metro Atlanta. I mean, they're, they're, they're in the area, but I, yeah. But I do not have that in front of me.
By God, need Google.
Right. Go ahead. Yeah, that's all I had. I was trying to look it up too.
Is there any land acquisition that's involved with this?
I am, I apologize. Thank you for asking that question. Yes, there is. And approval tonight is contingent upon legal, Legals' approval of the legal documents and moving forward with land acquisition. There were some minor permanent easements that need to be acquired to support the infrastructure that's going to be going in for those culverts.
They're in Powder Springs. All right. Anybody have any questions for Brandon? Their motion?
I make a motion that we, we approve the project to, oh, here. Project, award project number PW two zero two-two dash oh one Pendleton Trail Culvert's replacement to SH Creel Contracting upon Legals' approval of the land acquisition.
We have a motion in a second. Before we vote, can I confirm that it's 2022 instead of 2023?
I believe it is 2022. Just, no, I'm sorry. That should be 2023 because it's zero one. So, yeah, it should be 23. I'm sorry about that.
Let the record reflect that the motion is actually for 2023 dash zero one. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Next item is our counselor will take that item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We encounter this issue occasionally when Tyrone and Fayette County seek to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for some service. We represent both Tyrone and Fayette County. My duty to make sure that you're aware that there's always the potential for conflict with that type of relationship. We represent both parties. We review the information and, and our opinion, we believe the conflict is non-existent or at most, a very minimal risk. We do invite you to seek other counsel if you would like to do so. However, with this particular situation, we believe we would be well-suited to still represent you in Fayette County if that meets with your approval. I have what's labeled an acknowledgement of this disclosure. So what I'm requesting is for your favorable consideration of acknowledging that I have disclosed this information to you and you still would like to move forward, having us represent you with this IGA, which is coming up on the next item, if you so choose to do so.
Are there any questions? Their motion to approve the disclosure and confirmation of informed consent for road design and resurfacing services?
I make a motion that we do approve the acknowledgement of the disclosure and confirmation of informed consent road design and resurfacing services, resurfacing services.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Got about as much trouble seeing that as others.
It's a mouthful.
Okay.
All right. And building on what Mr. Davenport just presented, the next item is consideration to enter into an IGA with Fayette County for the town's Dogwood Trail paving project that is part of county project FA one thou, one zero zero six. Forgive me for reading from this verbatim, but this is Scott's item. I'm presenting forums, I don't want to mess anything up. Fayette County applied and awarded funding for Fayette County project FA one zero zero six through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program by ARC and GDOT. This county project included a portion of the town of Tyrone's Dogwood Trail, the, the portion from Far Road to Sonora Road, which is about one point one miles. The section of Dogwood Trail was eligible for inclusion because it met the GDOT functional classification and had pavement condition indexes ranging from twenty-eight to sixty-four with an average of fifty-five. In fiscal year twenty-one, pre-construction engineering funding, funding was authorized and construction funding is anticipated in fiscal year twenty-four and beyond. The town has established scope of work along with pre-construction engineering and construction cost estimates and the federal aid grant pays eighty percent of the eligible costs. The town will have to pay twenty percent for the pre-construction engineering and construction costs covered by federal aid and a hundred percent of costs not covered by federal aid. In Exhibit A, the anticipated costs are shown, Dogwood Trail, along with the anticipated federal aid and local match, which I believe our portion, let me pull this up, is one hundred... What was it? Thank you.
We're paying from seventy-four to Far Road and we only have to pay a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, this is a, a good, good deal for the town. That's why we wanted to get on it.
All right. Is, are there any questions? Their motion?
No, moved on everything he said.
We have a motion.
And I second it.
We have motion, second and discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Posed. Okay. This second public comment period is for items that either do or do not appear on the agenda. Same rules apply. Come forward at this time. Okay. There none? Are there any staff comments?
I have a couple. I hate that Mr. Keller ran off because I, I did want to ask counsel. He's presented twice now. He's had conversations with Philip and I. You know, I, I, I need, at this point, I need direction from, from counsel on what you all want us to do. Do you, do you want us to devote staff time into putting something together and seeing, you know, if we can make this work? I just, I just need to know what your appetite for that is and what your direction might be. Since we're coming up on budget time, this would be the time to start looking at this kind of thing. But I don't want him to keep spinning his wheels and working without an answer. So I just thought maybe we could have a quick discussion and maybe get some direction.
I, I was going to bring that up during budget time. I thought that was a thing.
Okay.
Oh.
Sorry, but I was just having a meeting outside of me.
That's okay. Well, as part of my staff comments, I was just telling counsel that, you know, Mr. Keller has presented twice now. You know, we, we've met with him. I was just trying, asking counsel for some direction so that, you know, nobody's spinning their wheels, nobody, you know. But I can't take action without, you know, counsel direction on something like this because the next step is, you know, it's going to cost staff time and, and some, potentially some months. So just wanted to know what counsel's direction was and I was hoping you guys could be here to at least hear that discussion. So you're up to speed now.
I have a question. It says in here, a hundred ninety-nine courses, only a hundred and six of those are eighteen holes. So is there an, an option for smaller or is it, I don't know enough about it?
There is an option, but there's lesser of attraction. Look at Peachtree City, not a stellar course. Golf courses, yes. Disc golf courses, no.
All right. But, but there is a map out there.
I believe Mr. Keller brought it in last time. It was a layout that used pretty much.
There is a layout.
Yeah, it was, it was a good bit of the land.
That has eighteen holes.
Right, it was an eighteen hole.
It was in my initial email, I believe, late last year or earlier this year.
Yeah, we have that.
Would that be the size of Wendell Coffee then?
No, I mean, Wendell Coffee is a nine-hole with a, with a, with a pretty good-sized driving range. You know, I think this would be a little bit, I don't even think that whole area is as big as Wendell Coffee's place.
First of all, disc golf courses don't take up nowhere near as much land as a, a whole disc golf versus ball golf. So, but we.
Convert it into feet. If you have a, a three hundred yard par, a three hundred foot par is comparable.
So roughly a third, yes.
Okay. I'll give you my opinion or, or comments. I would say, what else would be, would we be using the property for? Is there something that we've been thinking that we're just waiting to possibly use the property for? And if not, if this is a good use of the property, then we need to see dollars and figure out how much that costs and we need to know maintenance, what kind of maintenance exists. It'd be nice to know, I mean, I've driven by the McCurry one, you know, a thousand times, but I, I don't know how much it gets used. Those are the things that I'd, I'd like to see. I, I, I mean, I love the fact that it's, that it's a great idea. But then, when we have to talk about the nuts and bolts of it, if literal using taxpayer dollars for something, we need, we need to make sure that we're making a wise decision of use of Tyrone taxpayers' land and Tyrone taxpayers' money. So what are, what are those realities is essentially what I would ask.
And those are, those, those are things that we would do as part of our due diligence process. We would certainly reach out to other recreation facilities and parks that have golf, disc golf courses, ask them what the pros and cons are, what their experiences have been. I know that Scott, our engineer, has, he has some experience with this and, and from his previous life as a state-level engineer that's in South Carolina. So we would work with him and then, of course, figure out, you know, like you said, what those costs are. As far as use of the park, the, you know, for as long as we've had it, we've talked about having some sort of trail system there and potentially at some point to make use of the lake, maybe a fishing pier or a dock. That's about as far as we've gotten with it. I, I can't disagree that, you know, putting a, you know, the, the trail system would work with what they're, what they're proposing. It's just, you know, figuring out the costs and making it all work and, and all that, so.
Having, having the disc golf there is not going to interrupt anything else that we might want to put in there, such as trails, walking trails, whatever they might be. And I do think that the, the cost of preparing all that would, wouldn't be that great. I think a lot of that work, not that we're putting more on our Public Works Department because they do more than they, they do that now, but I mean, it'd be just a matter of trimming, you know, getting trees set up and mulching and putting in those mulch paths and through there. And I, I think that this is probably something that I would consider, you know, at least investigating and seeing if we can, you know, have that happen here in town.
I like the idea too. I'm just, I have no nothing about it. Like, are you going to have to cut down a lot of trees? I don't understand how much space we actually need. But I, I like the idea.
At this juncture, we're just looking for the opportunity to spend a little bit more time with you so that we all together can learn more about the situation, come up with a good configuration. Yes, there is some money that will eventually have to be spent, but before we get the surveyors out or the, the course planners, et cetera, we would like the opportunity to spend time with you folks so that we can get you more informed, so you can make the best decisions.
Some reason I'm remembering fifty thousand dollars somewhere.
I think that number sticks in my head too.
What would that get you?
Well, we have to do some further research on that initially and it depends how we lay the course out. At the end of the day, we're talking about a little bit of concrete for, for the concrete pads. It has to be safe. We can't have people, you know, throwing a disc on dirt when it's wet. Public safety is, of course, a major concern there. Now, as far as the allotments that maybe you have considered for a walking path, I cannot speak to. In a disc golf course, there is no walking path. When you speak of a walking path, are you talking something that's paved? Or are we talking something that's just carved out and mulched? We don't know that end of the fence, so to say. So to pull together a comprehensive number at this time.
And that wouldn't be your responsibility. What I'm asking counsel to do is give me direction on whether or not they want me to put. put staff time and effort into doing more due diligence before we go anywhere else. Or do we not have an appetite to explore this at all? That's what I'm trying to do, just to avoid you guys, you know, to keep coming back and presenting and, and not getting a, a definitive answer. I, I've asked them for a definitive answer before I go and devote time and effort into this to figure out what those steps are and what it looks like. So, you know, we're, we're nowhere near ready to say, you know, let's, let's bring somebody on to do a design or anything like that. It's just, do we want to explore the option and do the due diligence?
Or did you have something you want to say?
I, I was just going to ask if any of the big trees would have to be taken down.
On the course like this is, is the objective to invasive as possible. In fact, the large trees are a disc golf's best friend or a disc golf. I don't want to take down any large trees unless it's absolutely necessary. My quick walk on this land, it's, I don't see it being, or mulching, just the undergrowth or the fairways, tee pad, the greens, anything in between there. That's mostly natural.
Well, when you look at a disc golf course, you almost don't realize it's a disc golf course unless you locate one of the targets. And so I think trees, it's very full of, of trees, and that's a good thing. So, but I think we're just trying to look at the realities of, of, of cost and make sure we're not stepping on another use that we had already planned for.
I may, one more comment in regards to the maintenance. A, a course like this in the woods is heavily wooded, doesn't typically grow any grass. Offers the players will be. Typically, the only thing that we would probably ask for if a large tree fell, but a lot of times disc offers or players will take it, depending on, you know, pound. But I, I don't foresee a, be, be, on of maintenance on this course.
Can I ask that? Our staff is slighted. I mean, we have so many projects coming up that they're already spread thin. So I know you say, you know, those are things that we would need to take on, but if we give you the green light to look into this, can you at least share the burden to? You guys probably know more about this and can answer a lot of the questions. And I, I personally just don't, I don't want to see staff have another thing that's going to take a lot of time that they just don't flat have.
Whatever we need to. I brought initially is, over 30 years, he's, he's building a course now in Sharpburg. He built several of the courses in Spalding County. They can speak. Um, and cost and have the lasting effects from, to the.
Additionally, me and my brother, we fostered a course in Kirkwood in Atlanta. So for all practical purposes, we are the experts.
And keep in mind that sometimes government costs are different from other costs. So, I, you, I don't know if you worked with, with the city of Atlanta on that or if it was a private endeavor.
But we're hoping that this council will be.
Ain't touching that one. Sounds like you have worked with the city of Atlanta. Anyway, are you looking for some kind of a vote?
Yes, I, I would just appreciate counsel direction on whether or not we want to move forward with some due diligence and background.
Okay.
Oh, so these monies would come out of the general fund since we don't have anything?
Yeah. Well, and there's a big conversation that has to come about, about that.
If, if I may, there may be opportunity for sponsorships, where for each hole in many of the courses, there, for example, I own Integrity Construction, I may decide to sponsor a hole. So when you have a hole, you, you know, you have a little sign and it shows you what the hole looks like. But there are other means outside the town's funds that perhaps we can take advantage of.
So let me just, I'll just say, counsel, is there a motion to direct staff to spend some time in investigating this to determine whether it is the, uh, the, the right decision to make to move forward with this course? Is that what you want to hear?
We'll make it work.
Okay. So is there a motion to that effect?
I make a motion that we do some investigative procedures and start the ball rolling and see where it takes us from there.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Are there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Looking into it. We didn't vote to put in a course, okay? Just making sure y'all know that.
If I just let us know who our best POC is, I say, Mr. Perkins.
Oh, yes.
That way we can do this efficiently and, and we can arm you guys with the best information. That's what our goal is.
Okay. All right. I have one more question.
Okay, I just wonder, are we familiar enough with that property that we?
I mean, we know the basic lay of the land. We know that one of the reasons we bought it was because it was virtually unbuildable for a structure. Doesn't mean we can't use it for, you know, what we're trying to do, like a nature type setting. It's, it's hilly. It does have some, some issues there. It does have water, you know? So we do know that. You know, some of my concerns revolve around, you know, I know the, and, and I apologize to staff comment, this thing has taken longer than I anticipated it to. Didn't mean for it to be a full blown discussion, but, you know, the, the $50,000, I'm, I'm not sure that that gets into the legal, the engineering, the, you know, all of that, the site work that's going to be necessary to make this happen, you know? So, but no, I, I don't know the full lay of the land, other than to, to tell you that, you know, it's virtually unbuildable for, 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 you know, like structures and things of that nature. And so it lends itself to this type of, oh yeah, there's, there's water back there for sure. I was out there yesterday and there was standing water in the woods. Yeah. So.
Other staff comment?
I do have one more.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys. You'll remember back in December, we, we took $1,488,000 out of reserve or out of, out of the general fund and invested it in the CDs. One of those, I'm just wanting to give you an update on, on where we are. We did six CDs. We did a three month, a six month, a nine month, and two or, or a couple of 12 months. There were six total. I think the multiples were 12 months. At any rate, we have so far since December earned $20,879 in interest. One of those CDs is maturing next week. So we have, we, we asked them today to take the $248,000 that was initially invested in that CD, that three month, and put it into another 12 month at 5.15%. So the rates are great right now. And so the time to jump on them. But I just want to give you that brief update that, you know, that those investments are paying off. The reason it's 248, if you're, if, you know, is because FDIC. So just wanted to put that out there, but each investment is $248,000. But they are wiring us the interest from the first one, and at some point that, that money may be reinvested as well. But I just wanted to give you all that brief update of where we are with that. So I, I think our initial, our initial calculations when we initially put this 1.488 in the, into CDs was that it was going to return about $67,000.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? Any council comments?
We do have a, an event at the museum tomorrow evening from 5 to 7. We have two food trucks, and then we also have a couple of band members.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Understanding there's a need for executive session?
Yes, sir. One item for real estate for executive session. That's all I have.
Their motion to move to executive session. Opposed? We'll be back. We'll be back.